Not recycle anymore. All right, we're gonna reconvene our meeting for the presentation period and all two members in the audience are here to watch you, Chris, but there's a bunch of people watching on TV, so give them a good show. So we have a presentation by Desert Valley Disposal tonight. Chris Cunningham is here and he's gonna give us a solid waste update. Chris? So there's, our screens are black right now. I didn't know those screens were black too. I know these are, but everything's black, huh? Do you wanna wait for IT or?
It might be a little easier to help with the understanding of some of this stuff, but I can start going through it.
Why don't you start talking your way through. Is Marius on his way? Okay, IT's on their way.
I see this stuff every single day, so I'm starting to understand it, but it's a lot. Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you so much for the time and resident lining up for this one today. What I wanted to do for you was just give you an update on really California's recycling mandates. There are a few of them that really are taking effect now. I mean, they've been around for a couple of years, but they are really coming down and CalRecycle, the state's enforcement agency, really is under a lot of pressure to get people to sign up and beef up numbers. So we're gonna hear more from CalRecycle and from their staff. So what I'm gonna do for you is I'm gonna go with, explain two of the mandates that are currently affecting the city right now, what CalRecycle expects of the city, expects from your partner, the hauler, and where you're at on those, and then that good faith effort I've talked about a couple of times that you've heard me talk about. So we'll start with AB 341. That's the easy one. That one's been around. That was implemented in 2012 and that is the, oh, here we go. Okay, so I'll go over these first two mandates, 341, 1826, and the good faith effort. Then I'll go into something new that's coming up that has some major impacts throughout the entire state. And then after that, I'll go into the current state of recycling, which is the article I gave you. It's just a good read for whenever you'd like to read that. And then I just, I put up some goals over there for us to kind of work on. Oh, okay. So the first one, AB 341. This is the mandatory commercial recycling. This one, the requirements for this one, like I said, this one's been around since 2012. The requirements for this at this time are four cubic yards of solid waste per week. So anyone accumulates that commercially doesn't, is required to sign up for a recycling program. Multi-family dwellings of five units or more, same thing. They have to, they are required to sign up for a recycling program. And they can use a couple of different ways. You're using the franchise hauler, which most do, and then there's back hauling and self-hauling. And an example of back haul would be grocery store that takes their boxes back to the manufacturer and self-haul, obviously, if someone just held self-hauling material. But you gotta have proof of that. That's state law. You do need to make sure you keep those records. So I'm just kinda going through what these are. And if there's any questions, please interrupt me at any time. The jurisdiction regulatory requirements, that's requirements that are on the city. Basically, it's start a program, which we have. We started several years ago with a commercial recycling program and that's working out well. The job of both the jurisdiction and the hauler is to inform everyone. It's to inform businesses, inform multifamily complexes by form of letters, by pamphlets, by brochures. The city sends out compliance letters. The staff, I've worked with staff for several years on this, along with the CalRecycle representative, Andrew Smith. And also every time they call our office, we actually let them know repeatedly about these mandates. So monitoring, monitoring, this is basically what we do at the office. In our software system, I identify all the businesses that fit the criteria of what the state wants. And then you identify those, you identify the ones that are recycling, the ones that are not recycling, and then that's how we get letters out to these non-compliant properties. So that's mandatory recycling. This is the mandatory organics, and this is as of January 2019. So this is really affecting everyone now. This one right here is businesses generating four cubic yards solid waste per week must sign up for an organics, green waste or food waste program. So if they're a restaurant, hotel, they need to start diverting their food waste. And if they have a big property with landscape on it, they must divert that as well, the green waste. And for multi-family dwellings of five units or more, it's the same thing. They do not have to do the food waste, though. It's only the green waste element. So there are contractors usually that are onsite. They usually take that stuff to the proper facility. I'm not too worried about that. But the same thing, using the franchise hauler, they can back haul, self-haul, use a landscaper. And again, the multifamily complex is not required to divert the food waste. Sorry, this is a little bit redundant here on these two mandates, just kinda going over what they are. Yes?
I have a quick question.
Uh huh.
So if green waste is not food waste, and it's different from landscaping material, what is green waste? This is just so that I know.
Right. We call it, you can call it organics. So two parts of organics is the food element and the green waste, which would be your prunings, tree trimmings, landscaping, stuff like that. Did that answer the question?
Okay, so it is, so it's both?
It's both. Yes, yes. We have several different services. We do offer the source separated. So if it's a restaurant that just source separates their food waste, there is a container just for that. Or there's a container just for the green waste or prunings and green waste, things like that.
And if it's one of these really fancy salads at a very fancy restaurant, it could go either way, right? Green waste or food?
Yeah, actually, it could. It could. But yeah, that's a little confusing there, but we call it organics. It's all organics. The same thing here on the requirements from the city and the hauler is to inform all the businesses by letters, by onsite visits, whatever way we can to get the information out there. There's no shortage of that. The city's doing very well with that. Work with staff all the time with this. City is doing everything they can this way. There's a lot of information, no shortage of information out there. And the same thing, the monitoring, we do the same thing at our office. We have to monitor both the mandatory recycling and mandatory organics recycling, both the ones that fit the criteria and the ones that are not complying. It's a lot of reporting that the state wants. But we've been doing that for several years and we tend, we kinda have it down then. So any questions on this so far? Very boring, right? Okay. This is just some information, some examples of information we send out all the time. We actually have some staff members out for over the last month, visiting with a lot of these properties, giving them the information and letting them know what the mandates are. So we're constantly doing this education out there. Onsite visits seem to work the best, but you do have some out there that just say no. There's nothing else you can do. So this one right here, this is the good faith effort that I bring up every once in a while. AB 939, I'm sure you're all familiar with this. This was the first major piece of recycling legislation in 1989. It's precursor to all of these mandates that we see now. And basically, it's 50% diversion requirement. So every city's got to divert at least 50% of their waste. That was kinda the old way since 1989. For several years, that's the formula. But CalRecycle, they took long enough to figure this out, but they realized that there are regional differences and not all cities are created equal. They're just not. Up north, their formula, they have a lot of green waste up there. Down here, you don't. All those contribute to your numbers. A lot of building, construction material. That stuff builds up your numbers. But when you don't have a lot of construction, you don't have a lot of green waste, that keeps your numbers really low. And that's what Desert Hot Springs is seeing for such a long time. You're just above that number and you're meeting the criteria until 2013. And I think a couple of you may remember this, we had to do some tonnage modifications. Tonnage modifications are something that CalRecycle allows a jurisdiction to do if your numbers are skewed. And the reason they were skewed in 2013 is Edom Hill did some adjustments to their computer system. And what, Desert Hot Springs used to have a self-haul rate of about 400 to 600 tons. So I'm sorry, let me go back a little bit. Our DVD hauls most of the waste, right? But you also have others that haul waste, self-haul. So people clean out their garages, take pickup trucks up there, or construction, things like that. For years, that was pretty average between 400 and 600 tons per year at Edom Hill. Well, once Edom Hill made this adjustment, you got 7,000 tons of self-haul, along with what we haul, which is half of what we haul, which isn't right. It's wrong. We tried to get that fixed. Edom Hill tried to get it fixed. So that's the reason for the modification. So I thought it was important to bring that up because we've been doing that for several years. So that your numbers weren't skewed and you meet the criteria and you're meeting the mandate. In 2018, CalRecycle said no more of that. They didn't approve it. And it's not just because they feel it's not necessary here. Because of this recycling issue and meltdown that we have in California right now, the whole state as a whole, their recycling rates have dropped below 50%. So it really doesn't matter now, anyway. What they wanna see is that good faith effort. In 2017, CalRecycle staff recommended a pounds per day, per person. That's the new formula they use, is pounds per day per person. In 2017, they had a target rate of 3.8, but you came in at 4.2. The objective is to get at that or below it. Didn't quite make that, but it's very, very close. But just because you're over that does not mean you're out of compliance. They look at that good faith effort and that's what I'm here talking about today, is that good faith effort and what we need to do. And basically, what it is, is CalRecycle's push for mandatory recycling and mandatory organics recycling and get as many people sign up. It's things like this, things like me doing this here. This is gonna go into the electronic cannon report. We're going to copy this. We're gonna send it to them. And we're doing all this information for, so that everyone is aware of what they need to do. So CalRecycle's under a lot of pressure. Diversion rates all across the state are down. So we're gonna see a lot more staff from CalRecycle visiting cities. And just this one, it's all over the state of California. They're visiting more. They used to come around maybe once a year, maybe once every other year. But I've talked to CalRecycle probably at least 20 times in the last six months. I'm unheard of it for both the cities that we haul for. So they are very involved and they wanna see the best effort possible. But having said all this, state enforcement, there isn't any. And the city can only do so much. So all these things that you've been doing, you're doing as much as you can possibly do. In my opinion, everything you can possibly do. We're visiting, we're sending out, doing everything. But at the end of the day, if someone doesn't wanna do it, there's no enforcement. They don't have to. But I'm gonna get into that because that is coming. So any questions on this stuff? I know that was really boring.
Yeah, quick question. So we're trying to move this number. And with that, are we having enough pickups for green waste in the residential area? I know we don't do it every week, correct?
Yeah, yeah, we do. We pick up every week, but usually, since there's so little of it, we go around just the same route we do every day with the trash recycling, too. I mean, sorry, green waste. But it's a customer-provided can. It's not the big green automated cans.
Yeah.
Do you have to request it or?
No. Well, yeah, you do. There's, we do have some of those, but we don't have that automated program in Desert Hot Springs for green waste material. If it's something that the city would like to look into, we could certainly look into that, but it just hasn't been that much.
I think that was my point of what I was getting to, is if we did provide green waste baskets and we did provide the service, I know to recycle because I walk out to my garage and there's a blue bucket, and I know I have to put the recycle in there.
Yeah.
When I do my trimmings, I put as much as I can on my one can, but it's not even anywhere close to as large as the other can.
Yeah.
So I always end up in the other can also.
Yeah.
So the question is, if we need to divert more, do we look at possibly providing those bigger cans for the residential areas?
Yes, absolutely. We can look into doing that. That would probably be some kind of adjustment because we're gonna need an extra truck and they're gonna need to get all the green waste containers for that. But yes, we can absolutely look into that. And the educational piece to this, I think, is very, very important.
I think it's an option, an option in the future, to look at the cost of it, to see what it would do.
Yes.
Not everybody's gonna put, I don't put my recycle bin out every week because I don't use it every week, but the green waste, I think, would be the same thing. I have to do my gardening once a month, so it would be a once-a-month thing for me. But the question is, would we get more participation?
Yeah, yeah. Well, you probably would. Yeah.
Our, excuse me, our target number, is it affected by, how do I wanna put it, a bad recycling? I mean, if people, when I'm out walking the dog, like on a windy day like today, all the recycle bins in my neighborhood were blown open. You just look in there and most of them are not correctly done.
Yeah.
People are mixing everything up.
Yes.
So if you take a recycle bin that's got half garbage in it and your guy doesn't know, that reduces our number. So how do we get people to do a better job of sorting their recycling and not mixing their waste stream stuff into their recycling stuff? I came down from Seattle where we started doing this way back in the early 80s and you kinda got trained up there pretty fast. Plus, they had, their drivers wrote $10 tickets if you didn't do it and didn't pick up the waste and then left you a $10 ticket. How do we get the med education level up to what you can put in the recycle, what you can't, and what happens if you don't?
Yeah, you know, some areas are better than others. Some areas in the city are better at it than others. We've been, it's tough for us to go up and down the streets. We've done it several times where we don't pick up. We'll go through and we'll look at each one of them, say, listen, there's way too much trash because it is a big problem here. Yes, it is. The educational part of this is huge. And that's coming, too. There's gonna be some fines involved, and I'll get to that in a few minutes, too. But yeah, the educational piece is a big deal. We would put tickets, not tickets, but warning stickers on the containers, but to no avail. It's a tough, it's a tough nut to crack here in Desert Hot Springs in some areas. But yeah, it does skew the numbers, not too much. Because like I said, when you have a city that's got more residential than commercial and industrial, those numbers are just gonna be skewed. It's gonna be tough no matter what. Even if you had good recycling there, it's still gonna be a tough time because you don't have all that weight. There's some building going on now and I see those numbers jumping up, but that's what you need. You need the heavy material, the green waste. But that's why they're kind of abandoning some of this policy because the whole state's below 50%. They want efficient programs. They want everyone on a program. And that's what they're trying to do. But you know, to your point, yeah, the educational piece is gonna be a big deal and there's gonna have to be a major effort in trying to get the stuff cleaned up.
Does, do we get credit for what's recycled tonnage as you pick it up from the house or what it finally gets sorted out is actually recyclable?
Well, when it finally gets sorted out. So Desert Hot Springs has been around a range of 30% residual. Residual means trash. So sometimes, they used to do it quarterly, these characterizations of the waste or recycling here in Desert Hot Springs. And it would be sometimes between 40 and 50% trash down. Right now, we have it set at about 30%.
But with the situation going on with China now and not being able to recycle, some things that would typically count don't anymore, so we're going backwards.
Well, you know, I've had a lot of discussion about that. I'm part of association, the California Refuge and Recycling Council. We monitor legislation, regulation, and help shape the language for that. Talked, we represent about 150 haulers. So I've gotten a chance to talk to a lot of different guys out there. And right now, there may be some devalued material, like your plastics three through seven, that's the really stuff that's really devalued. But they're still moving some of this stuff. It's very difficult to move it and they're not getting much for it. But because of these mandates, you don't wanna throw anything away, especially the ones that have the chasing arrows or numbered recycling.
Pizza box has chasing arrows, but it's also got pizza grease all over it.
Well, that's different. That is trash.
That goes into trash.
Yes.
A lot of people think they got a big heavy pizza box, put it in the recycle.
Yeah, no, you're right on that. So that's the education, is, you know, any food-soiled cardboard or fiber, it's not gonna be any good. You're almost gonna be able to put that in organics, though, once we can.
But it used to be when China was taking it.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. Really, the short of it is, is for 25 years, we've relied on the foreign markets. Most of the United States has, most notably China, who takes a vast majority of this stuff. They've taken this stuff for this long without, with no questions asked. We move a lot of material, all these operations, tens of thousands of tons a day. It's very difficult to get it that clean. These bales, these commodity bales that they send out, one-ton bales to China, you know, they're source separated, but you got 5, 10, sometimes 15% contamination in them. And that's when they started to put, they put the green fence policy up in 2016, now national sword where they put an outright ban on it. Their threshold now is 0.5%. It's almost impossible. It's not impossible. It's very difficult to achieve. So what's happening is sorting lines are running at a fraction of the speed they used to to get the stuff out and sometimes running the same material two or three times just to get it to a marketable state. That's really where the problem is. The investment in some of these optics in sorting lines to be able to pick it out and do cleaner, but the problem is, it's just not running as efficiently. It's gotta run slow to get this stuff clean. I mean, California's really rethinking the whole market and thinking more domestic. So this is gonna be a long process.
We've got about five minutes, folks, five minutes.
How bad is theft from recycling bins affecting your numbers and our city numbers? Because I noticed on recycle morning, a lot of homeless people out surfing through everybody's recycle that's on the curb and pulling out the cans and the bottles and the plastic on that.
Yeah, the stuff that's actually worth something. It could, but most of the time, when they take those things out of there, they go to the nearest CRV, which is usually behind a grocery store in the same city, you get credit for those numbers as well. So I did have more, but I know you guys gotta get going on this. So I went over the recycling. 1383, I really did wanna get into a little bit, but that's got some major, major impacts. I read this piece of regulation and they are extremely burdensome. They're, right now it is. It's in the comment period right now, or they're reviewing comments. Over 2,000 comments, 300 letters, but things like universal cart colors and container colors for the entire state, mandatory audits. I mean, you're talking trash police now. This thing's coming up in 20, it's passed, but over the next couple of years, you're gonna hear a lot about this major, major impacts. This is one I really need to let you guys know about.
Why don't we schedule another presentation just on this item?
Yeah.
So we can focus on that.
As an agenda item?
No, as another presentation.
Okay.
So we'll bring you back again, Chris, if that's okay?
Yeah, of course.
Because I don't think we wanna rush through this. It sounds like it's something very important and you've, in multiple conversations over the last six months, has said that this is something important as you were sweating telling me about it. So I'm feeling it is very important for us.
Yeah, it is. It's got some major implications, so.
Unless windy day. So we'll bring you back. We'll, I'll get with your schedule and clerk's office will give you a schedule and figure out what's best for you.
Okay.
Really appreciate you. Thanks.
Yeah, no, thank you very much for the time. I appreciate it.
All right, with that said, we have about one minute and then we'll go into the meeting. So we're in recess right now. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak on anything on the consent calendar? I see none coming forth. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. At this time, we'll move into public comments. If you haven't been here before, would like to speak in public comments, a blue card is located at the back of the table there. Please fill out your name and hand it to the city clerk off to my right, your left, and he will hand it to me. I have a few. At this time, pursuant to the Brown Act, any person may comment on matters of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council not listed on the agenda. So any items not listed on the agenda may speak about. Under the Brown Act, the city council shall not take action on or discuss matters raised during public comment portion of the agenda that are not listed on the agenda. All comments are to be directed to the city council. Shall be devoid of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain professional courteous decorum during public comments. All right, I have the first one. Is it Stella Rojos? You don't wanna go first? Did you shake your head no? Simone, do you wanna go first? Okay, let me put it in order here. You guys just shake me off here if you wanna, like, put all the water ones together. Simone, you're gonna go first.
Good evening, city council and staff. My name is Simone Sandoval and I'm here as a representative of the Agua Warriors, which is a grassroots is a grassroots campaign to help control, help maintain local control over our water. I am a resident of Palm Springs and I grew up in Palm Desert, but for the past two and a half years, I've been working in Desert Hot Springs and I've fallen in love with this community and I'm really passionate about this cause. I'm here to request that the City of Desert Hot Springs publicly and formally endorse MSWD to continue as the manager of our water and so that, as they have done for the past sixty-five years. We've spent the past few months trying to understand a very complicated lawsuit, but what we've boiled it down to is that MSWD has been fighting for years to maintain local control over our water. DWA has found positions to take that control away from us and they did so without our knowledge and a lack of transparency. Our very existence as Aqua Warriors is to educate and inform and to stop it from happening. We are deeply concerned that losing control of our water will not only raise rates because it, it's, there is a water board right now that doesn't have any investment or motivation in what's best for Desert Hot Springs. In this effort to raise awareness, we're shocked that the city has not publicly endorsed or offered any support for this local grassroots movement and we are here to start that conversation. So we hope that you will publicly endorse Mission Springs Water District as the local control over our water and we hope that any DHS residents will wanna join in. So please come to Hyro Consulting Group on Wednesdays at five to learn more or you can visit our Facebook page. Thank you for listening and this is a very important cause, so please pay attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Who in the group would like to speak next? Just say your name when you come forth and then, and then your three minutes will begin.
Okay. Hello, my name's Stella Rojas and I've lived in Desert Hot Springs for about nine years. I'm here to ask that the city, sorry, of DHS endorse MSWD to remain as the, in control of our water. Okay, I'm not really good at this.
Take your time.
I am passionate about this because I've been here for a while and I've seen how now we're growing and we're building and now Palm Springs wants to come in and just, you know, start managing and getting into stuff that doesn't, nobody even asked them to come and manage water. Desert Hot Springs people do great. We're, you know, if we're growing, then I feel like only we should be the ones because they won't even let us be two people in their board meetings, in their desert water agency meetings. And I feel like if they don't, they can't have us in their board meetings, why should we have them managing our water? So, you know, I just, that's all I had to say.
Who wants to go next? Mr. Thatcher?
Yes, thank you. I'm John Thatcher and I wanna greet the city council. Thank you all. I know you all individually and have a lot of respect. I live in Desert Hot Springs and I've been part of the original group when this was all set up. It's been a couple of months and so I went to the board meeting at the Desert Water Agency and I've done my research. I read the lawsuit from the MSWD and I've asked some questions and the, you know, I gave my card to the president of the board over at DWA and he's actually called me and tried to get me to individually meet with him, which I decided not to do. But anyways, they're super arrogant. They are super arrogant. You can't even believe it. They don't think anything of what they're doing or how it affects Desert Hot Springs. We're kinda this oasis out in the middle of nowhere that they don't really, they don't really care about. And what they did is they sent a lobbyist into Sacramento and they took advantage of a ground management act and just kinda stole our rights to controlling our own water. And, you know, two years ago, I moved to Desert Hot Springs and I lived in Palm Springs and their water there is horrible. I mean, you can't drink it out of the, out of the tap. There's a chlorine smell that you can't believe. They openly admit they have chromium six down there, which they've gotta fix within the next couple of years. And, you know, the water's to the point where your animals won't drink it. You put a bowl of water down for your dog and the dog will go and walk away. I mean, it's really, not only are they arrogant about their own methods and their own water, but they're just like looking at us saying, you know, well, we're just gonna do whatever we want. And so it's, it's really offensive to me and it's discounting the whole city of Desert Hot Springs. So if we let them get away with that and don't show some kind of opposition and active opposition, this is gonna be a slippery slope where all kinds of things are gonna start happening and I just hate to think about what, what could happen once they start to mobilize. And if we show no resistance like we have in the past, you know, we let them get away with all that lobbying and get bills passed without us even knowing about it. So if we let them get away with that, then we're just gonna sit here and let them take our water. And they want our water. They really do. They've got a whole lot of problems they gotta fix down the hill. And so, you know, we're just sitting up here and if nobody shows opposition, they have their way with us. And I'd hate to see that happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ivy or Richard, who wants to go? Frank, I don't have a card for you.
Okay, they got it. Somebody's got it.
Did someone turn one in for you? Oh, there it is, never mind.
Thank you.
Never mind, I found it. It was hidden. Frank, you're next.
Yeah, I, I'm Frank Elmore and actually...
You turned off your mic there, Frank. Press the button on the front there.
Okay. So yeah, I've been here three, three and a half years now, so there are some issues that I've gotten involved with and this, this water issue is just nuts. I can't believe it. So I have picked up a sign. I was out yesterday and we were raising hell and hoping to get some attention to this matter. And I have some concerns, but I'm supposed to read script. It's very difficult for me to go with script, but I'm gonna do it. So in 2016, DWA approved a multi-year plan for massive rate hikes. This is all about the rates related to DWA. According to the Desert Sun, water rates for their customers could increase by as much as almost eighty percent by 2020. The Desert Sun quoted DWA saying that the average customer bill will rise from around fifty-one dollars per month to ninety dollars once all the increases are phased in. In 2017, they approved a second increase and the third increase went into effect in July. Another one is around the corner and then another one in 2020. They have also increased their sewer rates. That all seems like a pretty bad omen for us. What do you think is going to happen to Desert Hot Springs now that DWA is controlling our water? DWA not only has control of our groundwater, but they can charge us fees and raise our rates and we can't do a thing to stop them. If we don't like the job our local water board is doing, we can vote them out. That will never be the case with DWA. This is taxation without representation by DWA. The city council needs to fight for us. You need to be heard. Join us in demanding that local control be restored to our residents. And something came up in a meeting the other day that it seemed that, the information was as if the city cannot or will not take a stand about Desert Hot Springs water. And I didn't understand that. I mean, here you tout, the city touts itself on being the spa city where all these people who are sick like me.
Frank, that's three minutes.
Okay, you got it. I'm done.
Thank you very much. Ivy or Richard, who wants to go next? Looks like Ivy. You don't look like a Richard. Ivy, is it Boater, Boater?
Bader.
Bader, sorry.
Good evening, city council and staff. My name is Ivy Bader and I live and work in the city of Desert Hot Springs. I'm here to ask that the city of DHS publicly endorse MSWD to remain in control of our water. Our future is at risk. I'm here to ask the city council and the city of Desert Hot Springs to join with its citizens who oppose DWA's taking of our water. Desert Hot Springs is on the verge of great things with new homes and businesses coming to our town. As our city leaders, you are bringing in jobs and helping strengthen our quality of life. DWA taking over our groundwater threatens all your hard work and all our hard work as a community. If they control our water, they control our future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Richard Cromwell III, correct? The fourth. God, I forget your father's the third.
Hi, I'm Richard Cromwell. I live and work here in Desert Hot Springs, grew up here. I'm also here to encourage the city of DHS to endorse officially, publicly MSWD in retaining rights to our water, control of our water. Lot of it's been said, but there's a lot more to learn and you can find that out at our weekly meetings and so come on down, anyone that wants to learn more. Also, please visit keepourwater.org for even more information. So the information's out there, come and get it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Catherine Dickerson.
Catherine Dickerson, Coach Hillen. I was aware when I looked at the agenda last week that the NEXUS report was on the agenda and then now I looked today that it wasn't, so I wanted to check to see when that was gonna be back on the agenda, see if there was any kind of amendment to the NEXUS report that we're unaware of and if when the next time you guys were gonna meet to discuss commissioning a new NEXUS report to evaluate development impact fees.
Thank you very much. Donna Wardine.
Ditto on all that water stuff. My, my name is Donna Wardine, Mr. Mayor, council and others who are present. Number one, I would like to thank Desert Hot Springs Public Works for repairing the butterfly sculptures, also for the signage on Palm Drive regarding Memorial Day. And that's basically what I'm here to speak about. On Monday, May twenty-seventh, at Desert Hot Springs Memorial Park, 10101 Palm Drive, near Mission Lakes Boulevard, there will be a program to honor and remember all those who gave their lives so that we may have the freedoms that we love so much today. The Memorial Day Program will start at nine thirty a.m. We are expecting a flyover from Palm Springs Air Museum. We have our fingers crossed on that. The program will include speakers and music, so please come. Celebrate the victories, honor and remember our heroes. Barbara Eastman, chair of this event and a member of the Desert Hot Springs Community and Cultural Affairs Commission, was interviewed with veteran Eddie G. Johnson for a radio broadcast by Gene Nichols for his program called Community Roundup. This program, this radio program will air this Sunday morning at six a.m. on 106.9 FM. So get up early, have some coffee and listen to that show. And Edward G. Johnson, Vietnam veteran here in Desert Hot Springs, well-known, was nominated to the television station NBC Palm Springs for honor a hero. I understand that he was interviewed and that it is due to air this week at five or six p.m. on NBC TV, so watch for it. I also understand that the trial details might slide it out and probably won't be on today, but keep an eye out for it and, and help celebrate with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Robert Griffith. Robert's the last speaker card I have. If there's anybody else that would like to speak, please head back to the table to fill out a blue card and give it to the city clerk.
Good evening, Mayor Mattis, Mayor Pro Tempi, councilmembers Betts, Zavala and Gardner and city staff and members of the audience. My name is Robert Griffith. I am a resident of Desert Hot Springs. I am also a member of the planning commission, but I'm here tonight as president of the Hoteliers Association of Desert Hot Springs. Wanted to give you all some positive information. For the past few months, I've been working with an organization called Resort Trends. In 2018, they held the first ever Hot Springs Connection Conference. It's a conference for owners, operators and employees of hot springs resorts. That was held in Colorado. For 2019, they decided to hold it in Palm Springs. I met with them and impressed upon them the fact that Palm Springs doesn't really have hot springs, however Desert Hot Springs does. What they've decided to do is have a two-part conference. The first part will be held down in Indian Wells. Unfortunately, we did not have conference facilities of the size or quality that they were looking for, for a full conference. But the last two days, we'll be here in Desert Hot Springs. They will be experiential in nature. The conference attendees will be able to spend time at the different resorts and spas as well as spend overnights. We do have a ending reception, I believe, at Two Bunch Palms and right now we are planning for an opening reception and dinner at Cabot's Museum. So I wanted to bring that to your attention so that you're aware we've got some good publicity coming. In addition, excuse me, as a group, what we have done is we have a Facebook page now, Visit Desert Hot Springs. We also have an Instagram account. It is visit DHS. If you are all on social media, I urge you to follow us and like us. And if you are posting yourself, I urge you to use the hashtag #visitDHS so we can get that to go viral. Our goal is to have some higher rankings in search engines with visitdeserthotsprings.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in public comments? Final call? All right, if you haven't spoken in this public comment, there will be a public comment period at the end. Mayor, city, city manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna respond real quickly on the diff study. We were doing a fee study this council meeting. We had no plan on doing a diff study this council meeting. It is part of the general plan update and that'll roll out at that time, so I just wanted to clarify that with you guys. And then Danny, could you please speak to the, the current status of the Camino Aventura traffic signal?
Thank you, Chuck. Yeah, we, we've been working on the Camino Aventura and Palm Drive traffic signal for a while now and I just wanted to warn drivers and pedestrians that if weather permitting, we will be turning it on this Friday. That means that it would be green light, red light, left turn movements, everything will be fully activated this Friday. Tonight on the way home, you will be seeing the streetlights will be on at that intersection, so it will be completely lit up. But weather permitting on Friday, you will have a brand new traffic signal, so I do advise drivers to drive slow and pay attention to the new traffic signal. If weather does not permit, because we have had heavy winds the last few weeks, then we will turn it on on Monday. But it is, we, we do have a program for this Friday. Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Who would like to go first on mayor and council comments? Mr. Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I sit on the Coachella Valley Mosquito and Vector Control Board and it is mosquito season. Board has found several mosquitoes with West Nile virus, all in the east side, thank goodness, none of them down here. Actually, we have the lowest instance of mosquitoes here because of such, we have such little standing water and such strong winds, but everyone is advised to watch for standing water. You got old fountains, old tires, kids pools and the like. Drain and cover them, keep the spread of mosquitoes down. The board will be doing some active aerial spraying, mostly in the east valley again, as well as some truck mounted spraying in Palm Springs now that the virus has been detected. So you also wanna remember to wear repellent and get rid of that standing water. We do have flyers at city hall and also on the city website, so take a look at those and, and make sure we don't have any bugs out here in our neck of the woods. I want to thank councilmembers Zavala for filling in for me at the SEVAG Energy and Environment Committee last week while I attended a funeral in Seattle. Thank you. The Coachella Valley Economic Partnership Board, we met in Indio this month and heard from the One Coachella Valley Partnership about their scholarship efforts and how that ties into economic development here in the valley. It's a key component. And that is the same group that matches the scholarship dollars given away here in DHS by Rotary and the Women's Club. I attended the Women's Club presentation this last week. It's great to see how effective and active they are and it's a terrific impact, particularly on our students here in DHS who rely on scholarship dollars. Robert Griffith brought it up, but I met with the DHS Hoteliers Association under his new leadership and I'm hoping we can make this a more formal organization down the road. The city has, has decided to invite Mr. Griffith to work directly with our marketing people too, something you, you know, wish you'd have mentioned, on some tourism-related efforts to increase visits to our spas here in DHS. And as he mentioned, we'll be doing the Hot Springs Spa Association later this fall. I'm really looking forward to that. And lastly, attended the board meeting- And lastly, attended the board meeting of the Greater Palm Springs Convention and Visitors' Bureau, and they'll be hosting some movie-TV location scouts here in our city this next week, and a few sites in DHS. And the CVB is also continuing quite too well to actively promote DHS as part of their overall region, and we'll keep pushing them to do more of that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Mpi.
To continue with what Mr. Gardner said, the Jean Van Barren and Patty Mathis from the Desert Hot Springs Women's Club on May 13th presented scholarships to high school students. And the ones in coordination with One Future, and the ones that won is more important right now, is Gilbert Regaldo. He's pre-business economic, going to UCLA. Abigail Garcia Abaro, psychology, going to UC San Diego. Natalie Castro Orozco, marine biology at UC Santa Barbara. Edward Coas, math education at Cal State Long Beach. And Kimberly Sanchez Briana, she's getting her second year for medical at UCLA. We are having three movies at the Furby Center. The first one is going to be May 25th, Wrath Breaks the Internet, at 7:00 p.m. There will be six movies, and if you want more information, go to info@cityofdhs.org. The DHS Family Alliance A-Team is still focusing on absenteeism in the high schools. Right now, their primary focus is on Desert Hot Springs and then Palm Springs Cemetery District. Once this is completed, we'll send it to the other schools. The last meeting, May 20th, was on the vision statement, and I'm not going to tell you what that is right now because they're still reworking it, so I'll wait until they get that done. SEVAG Homeless Committee, make it short, we get a report from Path of Life, and what they are going to do is give us better analysis. They don't give us by city, and they don't give us after referral, what happens? Do the people get a job? Are they still in housing or whatever? But there's a new person, her name is Casey Jackson, and she assured us that we're going to have more stuff for us. Today, I went to Riverside County, who gave us grants on, well, for vendors that are happening through county of Riverside, and it's grants that are directly, come directly from the state to the county, or they come from federal government to the county, and this was basically on homeless. The Ad-Hoc Homeless Committee will not be talking about grants and funding. I got this information from the city. However, if anyone wants information, I did make copies, and I can send them to you if you gives me an email. On that note, the Ad-Hoc Homeless Committee will be meeting on May 29th, and the agenda will be sent out tomorrow. The first meeting, the presentation will be held by the Riverside County Housing Authority, and that's for us, the residents, to ask questions. At the next meeting, which is in June, we will be asking renters to come, and the housing committee will approach them again. This is an idea to stop homelessness and try to get them on the front side. Sir, that answer my?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Time is 6:00 p.m., May 29th, in this room.
Mr. Betts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. Attended the Airport Land Use Commission meeting up in Riverside. I met with a board member for the Coachella Valley Housing Coalition to discuss the progress that they're making in our city. It's actually significant. You can see the infill houses that they're building. They do good-quality houses, and it's nice to see their activity here. Attended the Desert Hot Springs Women's Club Scholarship Awards, and that was really impressive. What was really impressive were the amounts involved. It's not just hundreds of dollars, it's thousands of dollars that these recipients were getting. I was just shocked at the amount of that, so Women's Club, good job. I met with the Mission Springs Water District Executive, or no, the General Manager, to discuss issues involving the seat between MSWD and DWA and all that we heard during public comments on that one. Sadly, I had to attend a funeral for Cali Mesa Councilmember Jim Hyatt, and he had a long, long career in public service, and it's just amazing when you go to something like that to see how involved somebody was in a city. We can all just hope that we have even half the impact that he did, but that was a sudden loss, and he was a good friend. Been in contact, you always get these contacts from residents, and the one that seems to have come in lately was people getting, ending up with water meter high billings where they're getting $50 a month, $50 a month, $50 a month, seems to be the regular billing amount, and then they'll get one that spikes up to 400. They can't figure out where the water went, and then their bill goes back down to 50. I guess it's called high unexplained meter reading or something. Anyhow, I had to explain to everybody that we are not the Water District up here in the council. There's always that confusion, so the reason I'm bringing that up now is to let you know that, you know, we get our own problems up here, and things we're happy to address when we make mistakes or whatever else is going on. That one with the water bills, if your water bill is sky-high for one month and then equalled otherwise, well, I'm sure the Representatives of Mission Springs Water District will be happy to address that with you. My understanding is they will forgive that in some way, but anyhow, I just wanted to bring it up because it just seemed to have gotten flooded with those calls. Tomorrow, I'll be attending Sunline Transit Agency meeting. And, oh, City Manager, I'm fielding a lot of questions about a sign on Hacienda that's announcing a new fire station. I've had a mixed bag on that. It's been some people happy to have a fire station nearby, other people asking, well, isn't that parkland? And some people saying, well, I don't want all that noise and commotion out my back door. So can you give us a quick understanding of what's going on with that?
The sign actually on Hacienda is going on the other side of the street on our property. The people that put it up put it in the wrong location. But with that being said, the idea of proposed fire station signs is to provide a regular feedback from our community to see where and if they would like to see it in that location and what their complaints are ahead of time. We, of course, work with the Fire Department to determine where the best location would be based on calls for service and response times. And we are doing that with our Fire Department at this point, and due to future need. That's why we're also looking at one in San Gregorio off of Little Morongo. But again, it depends on the feedback we get from the community, and we'll see what that, you know, plays out to be after it's been up for about six months.
Okay, so the calls we're getting are by design, which is exactly why you put the sign out and why we have that sign there, is for everybody to know, no big surprise. Hey, you're, you know, a chance to come in, learn about it, and get some input, so.
And again, it says on the sign, "proposed." We did that purposely, so they don't come out there and say, okay, nobody asked us, we're putting a sign, we're going to put a fire station right here without anybody knowing about it.
The way things go, you might have put "proposed," taking up 90% of the sign and then a little bit down below, but anyhow, so.
Well, our brothers at CDF also want to make sure that we have their logos and stuff on it, too.
Great job you're doing, and I think it's wonderful that we take the time and put a notice out there and let the public get that, you know, understand, hey, if you've got a complaint here, here you go, come down here if you want it. I've had it both ways, by the way, so anyhow. And that's going on the other side of the road? So the ones that were complaining are going to think they've already won. They've got the thing moved to the other side of the road.
Yeah, the company that put it in sent me pictures last weekend, and obviously because of the wind, they haven't been able to move it across the street yet because they don't want to go sailing to Thousand Palms, but it is exactly going across the street. We own some property right behind the housing section there, and so it's going to be right over across the street.
You know about that wind? Gary just informed us all our mosquitoes are getting blown down valley, so that's good, right? All right. And then we've got sewer lines that are going in on Dillon and Atlantic, and that's not MSWD, that's Coachella Valley Water District. And I just want to make sure if there's anything going on. Sometimes when the people come in and dig up our roads, they don't put them back exactly correct, and we're watching that with a keen eye this time?
Yeah, we've had the discussion with the Public Works Director. He's also got the Public Works Manager out there to make sure that they are in fact doing that. It is a shoulder project. It should not impact the actual paved area, but if it does, they're required to put it back as it was before they did the asphalt cuts.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
All righty. I also attended the Women's Club Scholarship Ceremony, and it was great. So Jen is the new president, and it was a great event, so I just wanted to give her a shout-out. I also attended the Coachella Valley Conservation Commission meeting, and just as a quick update, our target is to conserve 200,000 acres of land over 45 years. Our target so far to date has been conserving 4,850 acres, but we've actually conserved 11,381 acres, so we've surpassed our target as of now, so that's really exciting. I did attend the SEVAG Energy and Environment Commission for Gary, and we covered a few things. It's a bit technical, but I'll try to summarize it in the best way that I can. So apparently, regions have EPA air standards that they have to meet, and they get a certain grade, so to speak, a classification based on the pollution in the area. We're classified as severe, but unfortunately, we're going to have to reclassify as extreme, not because we're doing anything terrible, but because the weather actually impacts the air pollution in the air, and we've had all across the entire southwestern United States, some very unusual hot and dry summers, which have impacted our pollution, and then our wildfires that we've had as well. Basically, we don't really have a choice as to whether or not we want to reclassify to extreme, but we have until June to meet the deadline. We know that we'll hit our goals by 2024, but if we don't switch the classification, we'll start getting charged penalties. So even though we didn't want to do it because we know we're going to hit our goals by 2024, we have to reclassify to avoid paying the penalty fees. And then I just also wanted people to know, because I was a little alarmed, I hadn't sat in that commission before, and I was thinking, oh my God, we're classified as severe. I'm scared right now, but it actually turns out that even if we were to lower pollution in the Coachella Valley to zero, that would only lower, I believe, the ozone pollution by, I think, two to three parts per billion compared to the 90 parts per billion that we're at right now. So in reality, our pollution is really just coming from LA, unfortunately. And there's really not much that we can do about lowering LA's pollution. So something that we did discuss was maybe, I know the supervisor mentioned maybe getting in touch with some of the boards out in LA and figuring out, okay, like, how can we work together because we're kind of having to pay for your mistakes right now? So trying to establish some sort of relationship, even though we know that we can't obligate them to do anything, but having a conversation never hurts. So that was that, and another thing that was going on that we discussed was IID, which is the Public Utility Company for Water and Power out in the eastern part of the Coachella Valley. We're obviously covered by Edison, so it doesn't really impact us, but nonetheless, it seems as though when it was first established, they had a 100-year contract to provide power to Eastern Riverside County, which is, of course, the eastern Coachella Valley. But it was so small back then, and it was just made up of a few farmers, that when IID was formed, they didn't really have any board members that actually resided in our region. And so now people are starting to say, hey, listen, now 60% of your customers are from our area, and so they want representation on the board. So Chad Mays is actually proposing a bill, it's AB 854, to add some positions to the IID board that would include residents of the eastern Coachella Valley. It seems that IID isn't too keen on it. They've wanted to include some language in there about water, and they don't want us to have a say in terms of their water rights, which I totally agree with. So we ended up deciding to send a letter of support for Chad Mays, but including language in there that the positions would only be able to impact the power portion of IID and not the water, which is a nice segue into Mission Springs Water District and us retaining our own water rights locally, as opposed to having a desert water agency have control over our groundwater. And so I, for one, am very supportive of it. I think it makes sense. I definitely don't want to be held hostage by another agency when we don't have representation in that agency. Given that we did lend our support for the eastern Coachella Valley to gain representation for their power, I think it might be a good idea to ask SEVAG if, or I mean, SEVAG, if they could write a letter of support, basically saying that either desert water agency gives us some say in it by including some boards or maybe all-out transferring of the water rights. I know that that part is probably kind of a long shot, but I'd say at least getting some board members that are from our region, getting that set aside on desert water agency would be really important. And maybe we could get the Assembly Member to set up a bill like that as well. I mean, Chad Mays is championing IID, so I'd say why not? So anyway, that's just my personal two cents on that, so hopefully we can get some traction there.
I'm going to segue right into that conversation. First of all, I should have asked them to stay. We can't make public comments back and forth during public comments. It's, I think it's a law. We have to allow you three minutes fully and not respond to you, so this is our opportunity to respond back. Some of the information up there is misleading. I think almost all of us appear to have taken some sort of position, just not formally as a council. I have never been asked until Thursday to take a formal position. So with that said, the person that's in charge asked me and asked why we weren't taking a formal position, and I said, well, local government usually doesn't get involved in local government until asked to do so. It's kind of an untold rule there. You don't get involved in someone else's battle until you're asked to get involved. So with that said, we've been formally invited to make a decision. Our process at the council level is very simple. We changed our policy on how things are put on the agenda. This item would have to be put on the agenda for discussion, whether we would want to hear an argument for us to take a position. So we'll be moving that forward with the City Manager's Office. But on my note, as mayor of the community, I supported the last two members running for DWA. I've supported all of the Agua Warriors' efforts, and so the information that was set up there by a couple of the people that were speaking, they didn't have all the information. We, I think a lot of us have taken formal positions. I think we need to represent our water, and I do think we need to have representation, which we don't have now. With that said, Rotary Appreciation Day. Each year for the last three years, Rotary's put on an appreciation day here in the community. It is June 8th. It is at the community pool, the John Furby Pool. Starts at 9:00 a.m. for a family fun ride and walk. At 10:00 a.m., there's free swim and free hot dogs. Hot dogs are grilled by the Rotarians. And then from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., you can give blood. So if you'd like to give some blood to Livestream, I hear there's some great prizes out there if you do give blood by Livestream to help in that cause. So that's a great day, again, June 8th, starting at 9:00 a.m., and it'll go till 2:00 p.m. So if you have a chance, please stop by the local pool here and participate. I attended the Riverside County Transportation Commission. There's two items on there that pertain to Desert Hot Springs, the budget, which always pertains to us because transportation dollars roll down through the state to the county to the region, and so we always want to be at the forefront of that. Nothing new. We'll continue to receive the funding that we've received over the past Measure A and other fundings if needed. But there was another item on there that will impact you if you do travel west. The state Route 60 truck climbing lane's been talked about for the last 10 years. It's finally coming to fruition. The construction's finally been funded, and so going west into Moreno Valley, you will be affected. They will be coming around locally. I gotta schedule this with our city clerk, giving presentations and trying to give the information out. If you don't have, there is an app, I think it's IE 11-511, and you can actually look on there. Also, you can go on Riverside County Transportation's website and get updates. The lane closures will start, I believe, at the end of this month. It will eventually be closed to one lane going west for, I think it's 60 days or so. So it will slow traffic in there. Alternative routes is obviously through I-10 to 215 back into Riverside, but you might want to avoid that going west for a while, for the next few months up till, I think the end date is Christmas time. So it's gonna be, it's gonna impact your commute if you do commute into Moreno Valley or Riverside.
Is that the end of this month until Christmas?
I believe so.
I travel that regular, so thanks.
I'll get you a presentation, which will get you better dates and stuff here real soon. State of the City. So when I was first elected in 2015, December 2015, in early 2016, I did a State of the City. I found it to be a lot of pomp and circumstance and, you know, people having to pay for tickets. We talked into the chamber at the time, we're giving away some free tickets. So with that, I led into town halls eventually for the last three years. And with my reelection this year, I felt it was time. The Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce has taken on an interest in our community and partner with us. They have five communities now that they partner with, and they wanted to host a State of the City. So on Thursday, this Thursday, two days from now, at 10:00 AM will be a business expo that the Chamber will put on. Lunch will, check-in will begin at 11:30. Lunch will begin at noon with my State of the City, and you'll be out of there by 1:30. Obviously, you don't need to show up at 10 o'clock, but, and then also, it is free also. So the lunch, you will need to pay for. It's $69 for non-members of the Chamber and $59 for members of the Chamber. If you would like to come free of charge, you just need to RSVP with the Chamber of Commerce. The Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce, you do need to go on their website or call them and RSVP. There is a free seat for you. It'll be in the back of the room and the sides of the room, away from the tables will be in the center, and then they'll spread out with chairs around there so that you can hear and see the State of the City. This will also lead into possible town halls. Any organizations this year would like a town hall. It'll be a shorter version of the State of the City, but I'd be happy to come to you if you're not able to attend the State of the City. And also, Michael Burke, who does some videoing for me, will also be videoing and, I believe, sharing it Facebook Live, so if you'd like to watch. I wanted to say a few words and say thank you to Linda Kelly. This is your last meeting. 23-plus years?
Yes.
And you've seen some ups and downs here.
I certainly have.
But you kept us on track, and I wanted to thank you for
Thank you.
... everything you've done. I know our finance department will be in good hands. You left it that way, and you made sure you wouldn't leave until it was.
That's correct.
But I wanted to say thank you on behalf of the City Council for what you've done for our community and for how long you've hung in there, because I think you could've jumped ship a couple of times if you wanted, but you made it to one of the best, I think, probably moments of your career here in Desert Hot Springs with the way we're moving the city forward, and a lot of it has to do with you, so thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I don't always like to end on a sad note, but do you have that picture, Gerald? I have to say a few words about this gentleman. Gives me a little choked up. John Messencheck was a longtime teacher here at Desert Hot Springs. Started in 2002. He was a person who helped with the youth council, was always there, and unfortunately, he passed away this last week of cancer. So I wanted to take a few moments of silence for him. Thank you. He will be remembered. All right. With that said, we're gonna move on to our public hearing. We have one public hearing tonight, item number four, Desert Valley Disposal placing delinquent disposal buildings on the county tax roll for fiscal year 2019-20. Finance Director Linda Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor Mattis. The City of Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code authorizes the city to place all delinquent trash buildings on the tax roll every year as a lien on the property. Desert Valley Disposal has provided the city with a list of 102 accounts representing $119,189 in past due billings for the fiscal year 2019-2020. They will also provide an updated list prior to June 30th of 2019. All costs for the placement of these delinquent buildings on the tax rolls will be absorbed by Desert Valley Disposal. Chris Cunningham is here this evening, should anyone have any questions regarding any of those past due billings, and staff is recommending that you adopt the resolution placing delinquent Desert Valley Disposal buildings on the 2019-20 county tax roll.
All right. Entertaining any questions of the staff from the City Council? Mr. Betz in the queue? No questions? Okay. When we talk to the public here? Anyone else? Sir, just give me one second. I'm opening the public hearing, and I'll call you up. Okay? Any other questions from City, from Council? Yes.
Linda, excuse me, Linda, these aren't residential ones. These are just commercial ones, correct?
These are, I think it's a combination of all, correct?
Aren't the residential ones included in the property tax already?
Those would be the normal annual bills, but these are delinquent bills.
Yeah, yeah, usually the single-family residence is a levy, so that's just on the tax roll, but the liens are your multifamilies and your commercial. There may be a couple of single-family there, just because they may have an extra cart, which you can't bill. It's gotta have some uniformity when you do a levy.
Any other questions? All right. At this time, I'll open the public hearing, and I'll take any testimony. Anyone that'd like to speak on this item, please come forth, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Sir, do you want to speak at this time? Please just come forward to the mic. State your name, and then you can begin with your comments.
My name is Tachuan Yang, and I had a question about the levy on the desert disposal. So I have moved here about nine years, and I am not sure why, but I just gotten a notice maybe a few weeks ago telling me that they're gonna be putting a lien on my property, and yeah, I guess that's my question, why?
Would you like to speak directly with Desert Valley Disposal? The representative's here today, and maybe he can answer your question, and I'll leave the public hearing open while we discuss a few other things, and then if you have more for the City Council, you can come back.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else would like to speak on this item? I see no one else coming forth. I'm gonna leave the public hearing open until he's had his discussion back there. I'm gonna go to Councilmembers' discussion and questions of staff. Mr. Betz?
Actually...
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you take your stuff off the cue.
I know, I had my questions answered.
Did you?
I'm good.
Okay.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else that has any questions about this? All right. Yeah, while they're figuring that out, I'm gonna recess this item for a second. I'll go to the first administrative calendar item, which is item number five, Professional Services Agreement to Prepare Cost Allocation Plans and Use Your Fee Study for the City. Linda? Or is it Jeffrey?
That's correct. It's Jeffrey this evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, Councilmembers. I'm Jeffrey Buckheim, Finance Manager. The city periodically hires a consultant to work with staff to review the fees charged for certain services, make recommendations to establish the full cost of providing city's services, and to develop a cost allocation plan to apply overhead and administrative charges to grants. The primary objective of this study is to provide a consistent and objectively-based fee and rate structure that was fair and equitable for the city. Since the city has not had an updated study since March 2015, a request for proposal to, for a full-cost cost allocation plan, a federal OMB A-87 cost allocation plan, and a user fee study was issued in March 2019, the city received five proposals, one of which had to be eliminated because it was turned in late. Of those five proposals, the firm, I'm sorry, of the remaining proposals, the firm Revenue and Cost Specialist was determined to be the best fit for the city. Overall scoring, the firm scored, tied second or third. However, they're determined to be, their cost proposal is about $20,000 less than all the others. The reason for the price difference is that Revenue Cost Specialist has actually completed a previous study for the city, and so due to that familiarity, they will not need as much time, so it won't require less time and so less cost. The firm has worked well with the city. They've provided a reliable, timely, accurate product, and staff also performed reference checks from other agencies and found that the firm is highly regarded. So staff asks that Council authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Revenue and Cost Specialist to prepare a cost allocation plan, a federal OMB A-87 cost allocation plan, and a user fee study.
Thank you. I'll take questions from the Council at this time. Or actually, let me take a public comment first. Anybody would like to speak to this item? I see no one coming forth. Close public comments. And Mr. Gardner?
I have two real quick ones. It just says fees for services. How about an example of some of the fees you're talking about?
So it'd be, some of the fees could be for permit fees, inspections, swimming pool fees, any type of services that the city would provide.
Are we including impact fees in that?
That won't be included until after. We will do a separate impact fee study after the general plan is approved.
Okay. And the second question I have on this, I didn't see on the staff report a timeline for them to conclude the study and bring it back to us. If I missed it, I'm sorry, but I didn't see it on there.
The timeline, since they will be starting, hopefully starting in June or July, and it'll take about four to five months, so we expect to have, expect to have something back to Council by November, December.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Betz?
Yeah, this will come back, I think, when you bring the report back, but I'm gonna encourage you to take a look at the business license fee that's charged. If you've ever been on the end of it, that has to figure out what the fee is when you've got a business and you're trying to work through that form. It's unnecessarily complicated. Some cities just have a flat fee of $25 and say that's it because the cost calculation is way above and beyond any revenue that we're collecting there. So I'd like to just maybe go into this with an eye on simplifying that would be my request. Obviously, the rest of the Council has to agree, but if you take a look at that as you go through the process, that would be wonderful.
Okay. If nobody else in the queue, entertain a motion.
Move we accept the staff report.
Is there a second? Any other comments? Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. We're gonna go back to our public hearing. Mr. Cunningham, was there any, was there any resolution with the last? I don't see he was out, he didn't come back? Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on this item? All right, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and City Council discussion. No City Council discussion? Entertainer motion?
Motion to approve staff recommendation placing delinquent Desert Valley Disposal billings as listed on the 2019-2020 tax roll.
All right. No other discussion, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Yeah, we'll jump back to the administrative calendar. Item number six is the award construction contract for the Palm Drive Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Project 2016, number 2016-02. Public Works Director Daniel Porus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. The Palm Drive and Pedestrian Bicycle Improvement Project will include construction of missing sidewalks, ADA ramps, ADA driveways, crosswalk striping, new buffered bike lane striping, new streetlights, flashing beacons to bus stops, and additional pedestrian and bicycle safety signages along Palm Drive between Comino Aventura and Two Bunch Palms Trail. In June of 2016, the city submitted a grant application for the state-funded Active Transportation Program, ATP Cycle III. In January of 2017, the city received notification that the city was selected and recommended for funding for the project. And in March of 2018, the City Council awarded the professional services for the completion of the engineering services and the plan specifications and estimates of the project. Since then, the projects have been completed, and all countering approvals have been received. And on April 2018, the city released a request for proposal for construction of the Palm Drive Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Project. The notice somebody bids was posted on the city's website and on a local webs, on our local newspaper and on Planet Report Graphics. And on May 9, 2019, the city received three bids from three different contractors, Desert Concepts Construction, OnX Paving Company, and TriStar Contracting. Staff reviewed the bids, verified awesome metals, and determined the lowest responsible qualified bidder to be Desert Concepts Construction with a total bid amount of $1,1749,890.00. There is a, we did meet with the contractor, Desert Concepts, because there was some discrepancy in one item in which the three contractors had a difference of over $1 million in one item. That item was a lump sum item. When we discussed it with the various contractors, one contractor had multiple subcontractors within that lump sum, and Desert Concepts, since they have multiple licenses, they only had one subcontractor on there, therefore, they were able to spread out their overhead costs throughout the rest of the bid items. The city has worked with Desert Concepts and various other contracts and other projects, and we are very confident that we can finish the project within the project budget. Staff is recommending that the City Council award a construction contract agreement to the lowest responsible qualified bidder, Desert Concepts Construction, Inc. Authorize the city manager to execute an agreement for the Palm Drive Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Project with Desert Concept Construction, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $1,749,890.00. And approve additional project expenses, which include a 10% contingency of $174,989, as needed material testing of $10,000, as needed inspection services of $45,000, and an SE connection fee of $54,742, which brings a total project budget of $2,34,621.00. Just a quick note, there was a typo on page 120 of the agreement, and it has been revised since then. On your package, you will have site plan exhibits, and you do have the bid item tabulation and the bid proposal, and I'd gladly answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, open up the public comments this time. Would anybody like to speak on this item? Nobody coming forth. We'll close public comments, and I'll go to Mr. Betz's comment.
Yeah, first, I want to commend staff for getting this project put together. This has been a long time coming and is very much needed. And also, you know, councilmembers go off to a lot of meetings and participate in a lot of different places. The mayor has diligently been attending Riverside County Transportation Commission Meeting. Those aren't there just to sit there and twiddle your thumbs. You actually do some work, and I'm sure the mayor had a hand in getting some of this funding coming in to, along with staff's help. So kudos to you, Mayor, on that. Sometimes you think we're all off at these meetings, just goofing around, and we're not. It's trying to do our job and get stuff to happen here. Okay, now I got some questions. I'm on packet page 97, which is showing a map of this area, and the first thing that came in is somebody said, I thought we were doing all of Palm Drive, and this is only between Camino Aventura and Two Bunch Palms Trail. So is this like phase one, and there are other phases that are coming along?
That is correct, yes. We do have, this is phase one. This is ATP Cycle III. We call ATP Cycle III just because the funding was from there, and this one goes from Camino Aventura to Two Bunch Palms. We do have a Palm Drive Safety Project that's funded through Sebag Funds, which will begin construction in September of this year, which will follow right after this one. That one will go from Two Bunch Palms all the way up to Pearson Boulevard, a similar scope of work, bike lanes, streetlights, crosswalks, et cetera. So there is a phase two and other projects along Palm Drive that are gonna follow the next couple of years as well.
Is there a phase three that goes up to Mission Lakes Boulevard?
There is a phase three that goes up to Eighth Street, and that one's for fiscal year 2020 to 2021, which we recently, actually, we just found out on Monday that we got awarded $330,000 of grant funds for that one as well.
Okay, so, and people were asking me, they thought, you know, hey, there was a whole lot more supposed to be done, so just to answer that question for everybody that might be listening at home and in the audience here, all those phases are funded now, correct?
Yes, yes.
So that's good news. All right, now, on this one here, packet page 97, you got a map, and we got, one of the mobile home parks is very, very close to Palm Drive, and I can't imagine that you would be able to put sidewalks in there. It's, there's a wall there. Are we, like, taking some of that property, or what are we doing to that?
We are actually going to install sidewalk right in front of it, and we are gonna modify the entrance and that approach. and we are going to modify the entrance and that approach with, with the palm tree that is there. It will meet the minimum, I believe it's thirty-six or forty-two inches on the ADA for that. So we will be filling it in with actual sidewalk in front of it.
We're not taking down that wall, moving it back?
We are not, no. There's some sewer lines behind it that would prevent us from actually redoing it.
Okay. Is that tricking the lanes too? Is that because of that allows us the extra space, the, the road diet?
That's right, yeah. We do have our, our minimum California standard now is three feet. We, we used to just have one stripe. We now will have a three-feet barrier between the bike lane and the driving lane as well.
Okay. All right, and then up there by was Skies Haven. Get a lot of traffic goes in and out of there, and it's difficult to get it out. They were talking about hoping to get a deceleration lane. Is that going to be able to be worked into this project?
This, it's not part of the project plans. We actually did take a look at it. There is a couple restrictions. There's a fire hydrant, there's two palm trees, and there is the entrance sign that says Skies Haven. If we do it, we're looking into trying to design it and incorporating. It'll just be a change order, but it is very possible, yes.
Okay, so I had a specific request from them that I'm relaying to you, and I don't think they care. They said they don't care about their Skies Haven sign. They're happy to move that back. If you look here at the picture, you can see they got a lot of frontage, and they'd be more than happy to give up some of that to make it easier for them. So I understand you got to do what you got to do, but that's from them. And nothing, I imagine Vista Montaña has a very beautiful frontage. Is that going to get re-landscaped and changed or what's going to happen there?
No, no, we're not touching that one, no. We, I think we're just catching a couple of ADA ramps with the new ADA standard.
And road diet is a dirty word up in, what is it? Playa Del Rey, where they put it on a road diet and created a huge traffic jam? Are you creating a huge traffic jam on a very busy boulevard?
We're not, we're not, we're not reducing the lanes to less than the ten, I'm sorry, eleven to twelve feet, which is still enough for any traveling. It won't feel like you're completely going to hit the next car vehicle, next vehicle next to you. We currently have fourteen lanes, fourteen-foot lanes, which are almost freeway lanes, which gives you a sense of free speed, and drivers tend to just speed on that one. As soon as we reduce the lane width to an actual lane width for the classification in the street, then it actually gives you a traffic calming mechanism where you reduce your speed. And it allows for the more three-foot buffer between the right driving lane and the actual bike lane, so it makes it safer for bike use as well.
And, and this includes medians work, landscaped medians?
It included a raised median. We just installed it on Camino Aventura, so we, we did it in different phases.
But this is down the middle, it's going to be separated?
No, no, there's no median on this one, just that one.
Just a, so it's just going to be a center line, double yellow line?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And that's all my questions. I had a question on the, the differences in the amounts, but you answered that, so I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? I see nobody in the queue. I'll entertain a motion. There's a motion, a second, no more discussion, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Item number seven is the option to fill city council vacancy created by the resignation of council member Annie Elie Zavala. She made an announcement last meeting that she's going off to get more educated and will be leaving us, so.
Can I make a motion that we don't accept her resignation?
Yeah, I don't think she's going to allow that after spending all this money to go to law school in the future, so. We wish you the best, and her last meeting will be July seventh, I believe. That's second, second. So with that, the city council has to consider a few options, and our city clerk is going to give those to us at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. That is correct. So the council has two options under state law to fill the vacancy created upon council member Zavala's resignation from the council. The first option is to appoint a qualified individual to fill the unexpired term, which is through December two thousand twenty. In the staff report, staff proposes a timeline. So May twenty-first is where the council will deliberate and determine what the process will be. May twenty-second, the council would direct me to issue a press release and post all the materials on the website and city's social media platforms. And then the application period would be through May twenty-third through June twenty-fourth. At a minimum, applicants must be eighteen years of age or older, resident of the city, registered voter of the city, not on parole or serving time for a felony conviction, and certify that he or she meets the eligibility requirements and is willing to serve in the office for the remainder of the term. The deadline for applications would then be June twenty-fourth, and then July second would be when the council would deliberate and appoint someone to, to fill the, the term. The second option is to call a special election. So the, the city council, within sixty days of the vacancy or before August thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, and the city council shall adopt a resolution calling the special election. The special election shall be held on the next regularly established election date, not less than one hundred and fourteen days from the call of the special election. So that's all pursuant to the California Elections Code. So accordingly, what that means is the next available dates to call a special election would be November fifth, two thousand nineteen. If, if the special election were to be held on November fifth, council will need to call, or would need to adopt a resolution calling the election before July fourteenth. That date falls within the sixty days, and then not less than one hundred and fourteen days from the call of the election. And then the second date available is April fourteenth, two thousand twenty. City council would need to adopt a resolution calling the election before August thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. And just like the other date, that date falls within the sixty days of the, of the July second deadline and is not less than one hundred and fourteen days from the call of the election. The Riverside County Register of Voters estimates that the cost for a special election is anywhere between twelve thousand to twenty-two thousand. Currently, that is not budgeted for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And so should the city council wish to exercise that option, a budget adjustment would be necessary. That pretty much concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions.
Open up the public comments this time. Anybody would like to speak on this item may come forth and speak on it. I don't see anybody jumping up. Last call, final call, close public comments. Go to council member comments, Mr. Betts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quick thoughts on here, the schedule seemed a little bit abbreviated to me. Thirty days to take in applications. I had a meeting with the city manager, and he thought, well, thirty days is long enough. So I'm just raising the possibility it's thirty days long enough to accept applications from people that might be interested in being appointed. I'm talking about the appointed process. So I don't know the answer to that one, but that's just what struck me initially was thirty days was a short period of time. And then from June twenty-fourth to July second, for the council to interview candidates, deliberate, and then make a decision. So if everybody's comfortable with the schedule, I'll go along. I was just raising, that's what struck me. And then I think, Mr. Mayor, you're going to have to come up with some process to where, if it is going to go by appointment, to where, how this is going to work logistically. Anyhow, that's, that's why you got that seat, right? And then on the election, you know, if there was more time between now and the election, but effectively, somebody would go through all that whole election process and then have one year. And, which isn't a whole lot of time to put up a campaign, go through all that. I know down in Cathedral City, they had some kind of commotion going on down there. I didn't follow it exactly, but they opted to go for elections. Am I correct? And how long is that person going to be in that seat a year or longer or?
I'm not sure.
I don't know, so, huh?
That was a seat vacated by Greg Pettis, and you know, he was just elected to mayor just previous to that in November, so it's a full term.
Okay, so that's quite a long time on that one. So normally, I would say go with the election, but with it being only a year and knowing all the trouble and everything goes through a campaign and then just have to do it all over again if somebody was of a mind to run, I'd be more inclined to go with an appointment. So those are my thoughts.
What's the cost of an election? Do we know the cost? Did we say, did you say it already? Did I skim over that?
Twelve to twenty-two thousand.
Thank you. Mr. Gardner, sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would agree with my esteemed colleague that normally you would want to hold an election on this, but with such a short time left and knowing how expensive a council race is to spend for that and then have to run again if you chose to do that in the fall, it's just, it's very tough on a candidate to do that. And, and it, and it leaves us with a vacancy until, depends on how long Riverside County takes to vote count, like they did last year. We could very well be into January before that person filled the seat and then would have to be campaigning again come spring. So I think it's way too short of a time, and with the, with the short term left, short time left on Ms. Zavala's term, I think it's wise to move towards an appointment process. I would, I, I, I also would agree that I, I'm a little bit of worry about the thirty-day review process for that, but I, I'm hoping that, that as applications come in, you can forward them to us to review and, and, and look over and, and go from there. But I would, having never gone through this process with that, I'm, I'm curious to how we would, how we would discuss and debate that.
Well, that's a good question. The appointments, the way I saw it, and I'm talking with the city clerk, was we, we'd run the press release and, and let it go for thirty days. I think the council would have the option if within thirty days you didn't have any candidates to extend that, correct? I'm sure there'll be a few, but you never know. With that said, Mr. Gibney, is there a problem out there? Okay, I was just making sure. Wanted to give you the mic if you needed to speak on something. I reopen the public comments. No, sure we do. Public comments reopen. You want to speak? Okay, thanks. So with that said, we would take the applications. We'd probably have the city clerk forwarding everybody, and then we'd have to call a special meeting to review the applications, and, and I would probably, I've seen it done before. I think two years before I was elected, or the year, the year before I was elected, they appointed and they took applications and interviewed the candidates. So everybody had an opportunity to do it, and it was a formal meeting. It was interviewed in closed session. And then they, then the council debated in public session the person and that they wanted and then appointed. Is that the process we're looking at? Mr. City Clerk? Your mic not working. We're going to build a new city hall so we have better audio.
Sorry. It's entirely up to, to the council, so if they want to interview, non-interview, if they want to call a special meeting, and it's at the council's discretion, discretion.
So we'd, we'd set that process, and we would get that out with the press release here that would come out and the, the posting that would come out. Ms. Pie?
It is up to, to the mayor, but nineteen ninety-nine.
That's your first appointment?
Yes.
You've gone through this a couple of times.
There were ten of us that sat in front of the council, and we were interviewed by the council. We weren't in closed session. And after that, the council deliberated, and then they picked a council member. Just as an aside, the person, Elizabeth Donnelly thought that the person that, to be elected should, should have been the person with the most votes if it was within thirty, sixty days. And that's how I came back on the council later.
So there's, it sounds like there's a couple processes here we could look at and go from there. I'm, I'm open to whatever comments. Mr. Betts, you have more comments? Yeah, go ahead.
I'm not going to vote on this clearly. I'm not allowed to, but I was told I could make a comment if I wanted to. I would just say that I really like Jan's comment about having the potential council, the next, potential next council member, kind of have them all, you know, sit or stand, maybe kind of like a panel or something. I, I think it's kind of like what you were mentioning, and having the council ask them questions. I think that sounds like a great idea. It kind of reminds me of when the chamber hosted the, the debate at the high school. I thought that was really, really neat, and just saying, I thought that was, that was cool.
Mr. Betts?
Yeah, I got to tell you, after thinking about how this process, the easy way was just to have the elections, you know, spend twelve or twenty-two thousand dollars and have the election. I'm going to have to go through all this. So I think we're going to have to play this one a little bit by ears, including on the timeframe. You're probably correct, thirty days. You know, some clear application, if we aren't getting enough applications or something, nobody applies or something, we got to rework this, just go into this with this schedule, but then keep an open mind that maybe we'll extend it if we have to. I think thirty days is a short period of time.
So with the comments that are said here today, it sounds like a pretty clear process that the council wants to take. The council sounds like it wants to take a thirty days from the posting. We'll accept applications, and then we'll, we'll call a special meeting to interview the candidates in public and then appoint from that, that. The appointment would take place, I'm assuming, on the July second meeting. So after the interviews, that would give us enough to go on, so. Does it sound fair? So we would need that in motion.
We do need a motion?
Yeah.
I would move that we take applications and interview potential council candidates per the report issued by the city clerk.
Yeah, we do a special meeting for that.
That sounds good to me.
There is a motion, a second, any more discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes with an abstention by council member Zavala.
All right, item number eight is landscaping and lighting maintenance district number one intention, initiation, intention proceedings for the levy and collection of assessments. Are you good on this one, Mr. Betts?
No, I'm going to recuse, Mr. Mayor. This one is in the heart of the downtown where my wife and I have a hair salon, so that gives me a conflict of interest based on proximity of property that I own, so I will recuse.
So we're going to do this tonight. On number eight, Mr. Betts is going to recuse. We're going to jump to number ten, which he has to recuse also. Do you want to state your recusal on that, which is your residence?
Yes, I have a residence that's impacted by, what is that, the landscape lighting and maintenance district? Is that the one?
Correct, and then?
Be impacted by my residence being in that district.
And then I'll announce my, my recu. I'm just too tired tonight. It was a long way. I'll be recusing myself on item number ten also because my residence within the lighting landscaping maintenance district on that item. And then we'll, Mr. Betts and I will come back. We'll have to draw straws. The three of us have a recusal on item number nine. So the first item is item number eight, which I just announced, our finance director, Linda Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor Mattis. The city continues to work with Web Financial, and they have brought forward the engineer's report, which was included in your packet. The cost for the improvements have continued to increase over the last few years, primarily due to increases in operational costs, utility costs, material costs, and also the development of projects throughout the city. Currently, the levy and collection of the assessments for fiscal year nineteen twenty are estimated to generate in revenues five hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars and thirty cents for this district. The budgeted engineer's report includes expenses totaling over eight hundred and one thousand dollars. The general fund will have to transfer to the citywide lighting maintenance district a total of two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars to provide the necessary services for the fiscal year nineteen twenty. The city council did adopt a transfer of a hundred thousand dollars in the nineteen twenty budget already, but it will need to be increased by an additional one hundred and twenty-six thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and forty six, and I'm sorry, forty cents. A public hearing is scheduled for June eighteenth at six P M. Staff is recommending that the citel, city council approve two resolutions. The first declaring its intention for the levy and collection of assessments for the citywide lighting maintenance districts, number one zones A and B, and approve the second resolution approving the annual engineer's report for the levy and collection of assessment for that same district. If there are any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
All right, item number eight, any public comments on that? See no way coming forth. We'll close public comments. Any council comments? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Do we have to do this as a two motion or a one motion?
We can do them as one motion, right, Linda?
Yes, I believe so.
There is a motion, a second, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
We're going to jump to item number ten. I must recuse myself because a drainage assessment district is within five hundred feet of my home. And so I'll be recusing myself along with Mr. Betts. Mayor Protem Pie will take over. Number ten.
Waiting for him to leave. Okay, item ten, drainage assessment district number one. Okay, item 10, drainage assessment district number one, intention proceedings for the levy and collection of assessments. Financial Director Linda Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Again, the city has continued to work with Webb to complete all the budgets which are included in the engineers' report, covering sixteen individual drainage assessment districts for the collection and levy for the year 2019, 2020. Each of these zones are standalone and all revenues collected and expenses are incurred and recorded into a separate fund. If any funding is on hand at the end of each fiscal year, staff takes that in to consideration when doing the levy amount. If there is a reserve too large at the end of any given year, the city will also reserve, I'm sorry, reduce the percentage of annual assessments from 100% to a lower percentage for that particular fiscal year. A public hearing has been scheduled for June 18th, 2019 at 6:00 p.m. The levy and collection of assessments is estimated to generate an overall total of $209,718.86 for zones 1 through 14 and 16 and 17 in the drainage assessment districts. Staff is recommending that the city council adopt two resolutions. The first declaring its intention for the levy and collection of the assessments for the, for the drainage assessment district and approve the annual engineers' reports for the levy and collection of these assessments.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Is there any public comments? Any comments from the council? Chair entertains a motion.
I move we accept staff recommendations one and two.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Would you call the mayor?
All right, item number nine is landscaping and lighting maintenance district number two, intentions, proceedings for the levy and collection of assessments. Before we get into this item, three of us have property within 500 feet of the district. Mr. Gardner, myself, and Mr. Betts, and I believe they're all residential, correct? So we'll have to pick straws to see who stays on the dais with Ms. Zavala and Ms. Pye.
Short straws will lead them.
Short straw loses?
If you lose, you're out?
Yep. So Mr. Betts and I will be recusing ourselves again.
Number nine is the landscaping and lighting maintenance district number two, intention proceedings for the levy and collection of assessments. Finance Director Linda Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Again, Webb has completed the budgets for a total of seventeen individual lining and maintenance districts within the district number two for the fiscal year 1920. All costs have been incorporated into the engineers' report. Each of these zones are standalone zone and all revenues and collected and expenses are recorded into separate funds. A public hearing has been scheduled for June 18th, 2019 at 6:00 p.m. The levy and collection of assessments is estimated to generate an overall, an overall revenue stream of $230,405.50 for approximately seventeen zones. Staff is recommending that the city council adopt two resolutions. The first declaring its intention for the levy and collection of assessments for the lighting and maintenance district number two and approve the annual engineers' reports for all zones for the levy and collection of the assessments for those same districts and zones. That concludes my report. If there are any questions, I'll be glad to respond.
Thank you. Are there any public comments? Any comments from council? Chair entertains a vote.
So moved.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Please call in the mayor and council member Betts.
All right, that moves us to the last item on the agenda tonight. Consider, consideration of a revised city council meeting schedule for summer, winter 2019. City clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So similar to last year, this year, staff is requesting an adjustment to the city council schedule. Staff proposes that the council go dark on July 16th, August 6th, or basically the entire month of August, and then we'd come back in September. And then in winter, the second meeting, December 17th, as well as January 7th, council would reconvene the second meeting in January 2020.
Open up the public comments. Anybody would like to speak on this item? See none? Is there anybody on the city council that'd like to make comments? Mr. Betts?
I'm just struck, excuse me, I'm struck by three meetings in a row, July 16th, August 6th, and August 20th. It seems like a long break.
That's how we do it.
Huh? You're not even gonna be here. You're gonna be-
I'm still fighting for it. I still gotta break.
We usually don't take the third one off, but the city manager says, looking forth with the items coming forth, that he doesn't think anything's pressing. And if we do need to call a special meeting, we can call a special meeting, so.
All right, always an option to call a special meeting. I'll go with the flow.
Any other comments? I see none. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Other comments? Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Consent calendar was approved and whole future agenda items can be discussed with the city manager's office. I do have one public comment left. David DeMasters, you put in two speaker cards. You can only speak for three minutes, so if you have two items, you must get them into three minutes. You may come forth. This is your time. You wanna bring it up? Okay, I'll go back to it in a minute.
All right, hello, everyone. Hello, city council members, Mayor Scott Mattis and police department, as well as city manager and everyone else participating in the city council meeting. My name is David DeSmeris. I came, once again, just to let you folks know that I am still hosting the Desert Hot Springs Cruising. It's every Wednesday. I have revised the Desert Hot Springs Cruising flyer for the Desert Hot Springs Cruising. It is hosted and by myself and many other people within the residency of Desert Hot Springs. It is a positive thing that is happening in Desert Hot Springs, has been happening since April of 2018, now being a full year that I've done it consistently throughout the whole year of 2018 and then going into 2019. Now, I would like to formally invite everybody out on the city council. Gary Gardner, Jan Pay, Mayor Scott Mattis, unfortunately, our city council member that is leaving, and thank Russell Betts for his continuous efforts to come out to the Desert Hot Springs Cruising, as well as Gary Gardner, previously when he was running for city council member. Would like to thank everybody else in the, in the city, including the deputy police and the division chief for your consistent safety throughout the city in times of our cruising. Thank you very much for those times. I would like to formally invite you as well for our safety personnel and responders, if you would like to come out to the Desert Hot Springs Cruising for a community building activity. And again, I would like to invite out, it is a community activity. I try my best not to have anything political onto the activity. It's supposed to be positive. It's supposed to be all encouragement for surrounding cities. It's supposed to potentially do something for the city of Desert Hot Springs where we can actually draw in more people and encourage people to stay here in Desert Hot Springs and to be safe and consistently do it throughout the summer. Quickly, I would like to as well touch on the basis of historic Route 99. We do have a historic route that runs through the city of Desert Hot Springs, if you folks are aware slash aren't aware. I know city council member Gary Gardner is aware and we have discussed about it. So if I can possibly be informed on how we are gonna move forward in that, I think that's a great asset that we have in our city of the historic route that runs down from Washington all the way down to Calexico. I think we should pursue that and highlight that for our city, especially for things in a sense of people coming in and just tourism for the city. So I want to touch on that because, again, I'm not part of the historical society, but I am part of the Desert Hot Springs Cruising that has classic cars.
Thank you for your comments. Oh, the time, Ms. Zavala, I wanted to know the time. David? Ms. Zavala, I wanted to know the time.
The time is 4:30 p.m. and then seven. It ends around like 7:00, 7:30. So if you'd like to come out and just meet a lot of us that have the classic cars, it's supposed to be something positive, like I said. Thank you.
There was a future gen item that I skipped over. Mr. Betts, wanted to make a comment?
Yeah, when we get to July 4th, everybody's gonna be asking about fireworks and that's gonna be too late to take up that subject either a yea or a nay by the council. I think if we put it on the next council meeting agenda, then we can decide what we do or don't wanna do, but this, once time goes by, all we're gonna be able to do is tell everybody that wanted fireworks, oh, sorry, we forgot to take it up. So there's my pitch.
All right. We have nothing else on public comments. Our meeting, our next meeting will be June 4th and there's a planning commission on June 11th. We are adjourned.